It is 6:00 PM. We will begin the meeting. This is the April meeting of the East Peoria, City of East Peoria Zoning Board of Appeals. Our first item on the agenda is a call to order. So roll call.
Driscoll.
Here.
Whitman.
Here.
Tippett.
Here.
Broschiers.
Here.
Sams.
Here.
Brunner.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay. We are missing Tim Kelly tonight. Next item is the approval of the minutes from the meeting held on February 10th, 2025. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you, John. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, George. Minutes have been approved. And Brad is running the meeting and taking notes, so not gonna tell you to talk slow, but... Just a little bit. Okay, our first case tonight is case SU-2025-002, and that's the petition of Doug Purdue for a special use to allow a vehicle repair shop on property located at 3210 East Washington Street. That property ID number is 01-01-25-304-001. Would the petitioner approach the podium, please? Okay, and you are Doug Purdue, is that correct?
Yes.
And Doug, the first thing is I need to swear you in, so will you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, and go ahead and explain to the board what you would like to do at the property, and I know, I think I got the word today that you actually own both of those buildings, but we're just talking about the building that if I'm looking at them is on the left, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, excellent.
3210.
Excellent. Okay, yeah, go ahead and proceed and tell us.
What we would like to propose to do there is to put a auto repair shop in there for the public. Currently, it was a heating and air conditioning building for the longest time, so we can install for many, many years, so... But that's what we'd like to do.
Questions for Doug. Michael?
No comments.
Troy?
I noticed that most of the lot is gravel. Are you planning to do any paving or anything up there with having customers' cars and stuff up in that area?
Yeah, there's a very large piece of asphalt out front.
Out front?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, but not on the sides, right?
Yeah, there's nothing on the side. That's a different actual, different address over on the far-left side.
Oh, okay. Okay, that's all I had.
Is this going to be like, you're gonna rent it out to a company to work on cars, or...
Yeah, there's a single guy. He's been my mechanic for a couple of years now, working on the sweeper trucks and things, and he'd like to try to expand and...
And you're helping him out and backing him to do this?
Yep.
That's good. Excellent. That's all I have. Thank you.
I don't think I have any questions at this time.
Yes, so you say it's just a single guy coming in here.
Yes.
Is he planning on expanding to have more mechanics?
Mm-mm.
So he's just going to keep it himself?
Yeah, he just wants to be in there by himself.
Okay, so that right there limits the amount of traffic that's gonna come in and out of there?
Yeah, it's not gonna be three or four different mechanics in there.
And it's just the mechanical side? You're not gonna be doing bodywork, paperwork, or stuff like that?
No bodywork or anything like that, yeah, no.
Okay. That's all I have.
I think part of my conversation with him today was the oil separator.
Yes.
And so I'm pretty sure that the city, well, I confirmed it with you, didn't I, this afternoon? The city will require one if it's not there. So I know, he was kind of like, we think there might be one, but we're not really sure. Just know that it is a requirement going forward.
Yes.
And then go ahead and explain maybe what you're going to do to try and add some landscape or anything that would enhance the...
Sure. I mean, we'll do whatever's required. It's, right now, it actually is a pretty decent looking with the boulders and everything around the sign, and there's some nice shrubs and grasses up against the front of the building. But we were also looking at putting a few evergreens off over and around, some more shrubbery and bushes, and maybe some flowering in the gravel, not the gravel, but the landscaped area around the sign. It's the...
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and kind of dress that up a little bit with some color and some things, so that's what we were...
So I have a question. So on your, you have some shrubber out front, probably about 20 feet from the highway? There's like a fence, and there's some shrubs in front of it?
Yeah.
Is that part of this plot?
No.
That's not?
That's part of the 3202.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
About how many cars do you think he would have at any given time, maybe the max amount? And then have you had any discussion about where he would store them?
Yes, so we've talked about having, if he's, let's see, by himself, I mean, we're figuring if he can do three vehicles at once, diagnose one, order parts, so on and so forth, and maybe have one that can be in and out. That's kind of what we considered on the inside. There's probably room to put four cars in there right now and still be able to function on those. And then there's, I kind of drew up a little bit of a plan of where we would park the customers' cars, and then the cars that were finished and ready to be picked up and moved out.
Well, I know that the city has requirements for landscaping, and I know George and I were kind of just chatting about where you would enhance the landscaping on this property to camouflage anything from the street or anything, and it doesn't seem like you've got just a ton of options.
Yeah.
So I don't know, we'll have to do, when we make a motion, we may include requirements, and the requirements would be by points.
Yeah.
Currently, I think the recommendation was like 150 points. I don't know where you, yeah, I don't know that you have enough dirt or whatever to come up with that many.
Sure, because there's so much blacktop there in the front. It's not a good size.
But that might be a part of our motion, then, Doug, is at least meet a certain requirement.
When you say camouflage, what are we wanting to camouflage?
A lot of times, if we have a landscaping requirement, it's number one, to make the property look a little more attractive, or possibly hide something from traffic passing by. Sometimes it's a fence, you know, basically if you're gonna have some outside storage of something, and then we're like, well, you're on a corner, so maybe we put up a fence, or maybe we put up some evergreens or something like that, and so...
Arborbiidas or something like that.
Right, and your property is so big, I don't know that there's a, we can camouflage it from anything. But yeah, George and I were just concerned that there just wasn't a lot of places to actually plant something anyway.
Sure, sure.
Anyway, probably it will be a requirement in the motion, and we'll have to see what everybody thinks.
Okay, okay.
Any more questions for Doug? Okay, you can have a seat. And then is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the zoning board of appeals on this particular case? If so, you'll need to approach the podium. Okay, seeing none. We will then move along with the second case, and then after that's finished, we'll start deliberations on this case as well. The second case is case R-2025-003, and that's the petition of Pete Mangieri to rezone property located at the end of Quiet Creek Drive. Property ID number is 01-01-23-101-055, excuse me, 035, from R3 to family dwelling district to R4, multiple family dwelling district. Would the petitioner approach the podium? And will you state your name for me?
PJ Mangieri.
PJ, will you raise your right hand for me? And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
So we are looking to rezone the property, as stated. Where it currently sits is R3 to family dwelling to allow R4 multiple family dwelling. Our project plan here is to mirror or somewhat mimic what is currently available there at the end of Quiet Creek Drive, which is a row of eight townhomes, as I believe the development is suitable for the area. It would be beneficial to address the housing need here in East Peoria. But as it sits currently, listed as a two-family, it allows, from my understanding, a duplex, possibly a triplex, where as our ideal site plan, I think is most suitable for roughly a row of eight townhomes, as I think previously shown in some of those site plans.
Questions? Michael?
Yeah, so I'm actually a previous tenant of 212 Quiet Creek Drive.
Hey, how about that?
Just curious, where exactly on the piece of property are you looking to build? On that old concrete slab? Is that what you're thinking, or...
That old concrete slab would be parking for one of these developments, yes. And it would be, I guess to address that further, me, I'm a local guy, by no means backed by any big-time private equity money, so this would have to be completed in phases, certainly. And, you know, it would be there on that slab for the parking, and then, let's see here, just to the east of that would be, say, Phase 1.
Okay.
So the parking that's existing there, the infrastructure, it was all kind of built out for this originally, is my understanding, in talking to the two prior owners, and just kind of putting that vision full circle is what we're trying to do.
Okay. And then any thoughts about any kind of drainage? I know that's kind of, can get wet back there.
There is some drainage infrastructure, but we will be adding on an as-needed basis. Yeah, we're still very juvenile, I guess for lack of a better term, in what we've done from a true site plan approach.
Sure.
Because step one would be rezoning to allow for multiple townhomes, more than, say, two.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Troy?
You said multiple. How many, what kind of expansion are you looking at for the area back there?
We're looking at two, possibly three.
Okay. That's all I was wondering.
Thank you.
No questions?
Two, possibly three, what? You talked about like an eightplex or something like that. Is two or three of those, or total? Two or three?
Correct.
Times eight, okay.
Yep.
So similar to what's already there at 202 Quiet Creek Drive, you're looking to do one, two, or three of those for the back? There are existing dwellings back there, is that correct?
There are no existing dwellings.
There's buildings back there of some sort?
No.
Was that the right place? Okay.
House to the left.
Okay, so the house to the left is not on your property?
Not on the property, no.
That's probably what I, I gotcha, okay. So it appears to me that this will be a shared driveway with 202 Quiet Creek Drive, is that correct? Just what I look at, it appears the street stops at the...
At the roundabout?
At the roundabout, and then the rest of it may just be driveway. I don't know.
Yeah, so it continues east. There's a...
And that is the street, that is the street to the...
Quiet Creek, Quiet Creek Drive is the street, and then there is a rock road that ventures down into a once asphalt-paved slab.
Okay. Okay, so it doesn't matter for anything we're doing right now. I was just curious if that would be a shared driveway. It sounds like it's not, so that's fine. That would be somebody else that would, you might have to do something with that, I'm not sure, but...
Sure.
I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Just for clarification, then, do you actually own the existing eight units?
I own seven of the eight.
Okay, okay, so you'd said you'd talked to the two previous owners, and, okay.
Yep, the original developer, and then the gentleman that I purchased the seven of eight from.
Okay, go ahead.
So if you get it rezoned, what kind of timeframe are we talking? You have any, I, I mean, four or five years, probably?
That's, I would say that's fair to say.
I mean, because you said you're still in the baby steps of, you know, just doing this.
Very much in the infancy stages, yes.
Okay. So there's, yeah, there's a lot to do. The drop's way off down there. Who, so who owns all that property down there?
I believe I do.
Okay. Okay, that's all I have.
That's all you have?
Thank you.
Okay, and in your mind, obviously it's early, how many stories are you thinking?
We're looking at a two-story, you know, just your traditional...
Again, very similar to what's already there.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, single floor, and then a floor above that.
And then I think somebody would ask, is this, any plans for subsidized housing?
I do not believe so at this time, but again, we're still in our infancy stages, so I can't truthfully answer that question.
Okay, so if we didn't tonight rezone this, what would be the maximum number of units you could add?
It's my understanding it's duplexes, and there is no maximum. It's just whatever capacity would be available to be developed.
Okay. So...
How many?
No, that's, I was just...
I'm just curious, how many acres do you have there?
There is just over eight acres.
Okay.
Right, so even without what we're doing tonight, you could still go forward and add buildings and residences there, and you wouldn't need approval from us?
That is correct.
That seems odd. I wouldn't think you'd be able to do that, but I don't know.
It's already zoned for residential. It's not like we're changing it from commercial to residential. It could be built on as it is now.
I just assumed a one and two-family dwelling is, would be maximum per lot, but I don't, I don't know the answer at all.
Brad, do you have any idea?
Let me check the code real quick.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions for Pete while we're waiting on Brad to possibly find some info? No? Okay.
I guess the, so you're looking at like 24 units maybe additional, and you've already got eight, so that's 32. Is there any concern with just having that one drive for all that?
That would be addressed in further due diligence.
Okay, I'm just curious about that. And is there future plans at all for, do you own any of the other lots around there, or is that the...
I do.
You do, okay. Okay, that's all I got.
Can I ask just one more question?
Mm-hmm.
I can't tell enough...
I'm sorry. Is there a house? What I'm seeing is a roofline of a house just west going on, or east on 74?
There?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not on his property.
That's not his property.
I know, but is that a house, though?
Yeah, yes.
So, okay. I know where this is at now. It's at the, and this is all in the city?
This is all in the city.
But there's no sewer?
There is sewer.
Oh, they have sewer now back there?
Sewer infrastructure is already in place.
Oh, it is? Okay. Okay.
Yep, all the, all the major infrastructure is already in place. This was a development that was somewhat planned out 25-ish years ago.
And I was in the fire department.
Oh, so it was originally even supposed to be larger than just the eight original units?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Don, are you thinking that because it's X number of acres, that there's a limit on...
No, I really don't know. All I would, my only thought, like my lot, is single-family dwelling. I think it could be one or two-family dwelling probably, and that's it. But it would just be, I could put like one house or one duplex on my property. I don't know what happens when you have eight acres. I mean, I'm curious what we'll find out here, if anything.
The code simply says two-family dwellings.
Okay.
It doesn't specify how many you could have of two-family dwellings. That would probably be a question addressed to the Director of Planning and Community Development. As I think he would probably be the one who would address those concerns.
It's, I'm just curious. It's no big deal, and it has nothing to do with what we are looking to approve tonight, so...
Right, and just to kind of clarify, you know, the approval would be of the rezoning, not necessarily of the structures themselves, so...
Right, the actual project.
So the project isn't what's at stake here. It's the rezoning of the property.
Perfect.
You sound just like Ty.
Trained him well.
Yeah.
Okay, any further questions, then?
Yeah, I have a quick question. To your knowledge, in, when this was planned 25 years ago, do you know if the project received permits in terms, because I know that there is a wetland back there, so that's really what I'm bringing up. I don't even know if you could build there because of those wetlands, because they would be protected. So do you know if they received any kind of permits from the EPA or the Army of Civil Engineers?
I do not know. No, I can't say with certainty.
Something that we look into, just because I know that is designated as a wetland.
Any further questions? No? Okay, you can have a seat.
Thank you.
And is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the ZBA on this particular case? Okay, approach the podium.
Hello.
State your name for me, please.
Diana Avila-Johns.
Can you spell your last name for us?
Uh-huh, A-V-I-L-A, space, J-O-H-N-S.
And will you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead. And we do, we don't have the clock on, but we limit our comments to about five minutes.
Okay.
Okay?
I live at the property 215 Quiet Creek Drive. If you were looking on the maps, that, Quiet Creek Drive used to be the driveway for 215 Quiet Creek Drive. They widened it because the condos were built there. If you're going up the hill, there are two lanes, one coming down from the condos and one going up. The problem is, our driveway is on the, on the, on the down, on the side coming down. We have issues now with people coming out of the condos, and they're going into that lane when that is the only lane we can be in to get in our driveway. So at some point, the cars coming out, we have to move over to be able to get up our drive, and these cars are coming down practically coming into us. There have been some issues in the wintertime, especially with getting our driveway plowed in, and even having less space to access our drive. That driveway is not, it's not that wide. I don't understand how it could possibly accommodate more traffic and further impact the safety of us going up the hill to our house, our only way up to the house. The other concern I have is that we are on well water. Our well water is drawn from a well that would sit, of course, below our house. I haven't been able to get a response back from the city water guy, Chris something, I can't remember his name, as to whether or not digging back there is gonna impact our well water for our home. We're not on city water. We don't have city water. And the other issue being, that property not only would be rezoned next to us, but that also entails the property that is above us, which already has erosion problems that could, that are, and could further impact our house. My concern would be any of that being disturbed to create a bigger issue, so to speak. My other, my question is, aren't the condos already R3? There are R3, aren't they?
That is incorrect. They are R4.
Pardon me?
Yes?
There are R4.
There are R4.
The zoning district that he's wanting to rezone to.
Okay, just the back property is not R4? If, they're already R4. The back property is R3?
The back property is R3, the front property where the condos exist.
Okay, and back property, you could potentially build two-family condos, correct? If you want to build the same thing, why do you have to get rezoned to R4? Wouldn't that allow a taller structure and an apartment complex?
Well, I think that's what we were asking before, was even without changing the zoning tonight, he could proceed and put up a significant number of duplexes up there as it is. So there could be development up there regardless of what we decide tonight.
Okay, and I guess my other issue is, are you planning to build on the side of, you know, where the, where the little road goes back? Are you planning on building on this side of that little road?
Are you talking about the upward slope?
I'm talking, there's a hillside right there, yes.
I don't foresee that being the case, no.
Because that would definitely impact some of the erosion problems that already occur there.
Well, the petitioner, if he proceeds with it, will have to adhere to all city code regarding erosion, steep slope ordinances, and that sort of thing, and like, and he's already said that all of that property has already, already has the infrastructure in it for city water and that sort of thing, so that's, that already exists.
Would we have time to find out whether or not digging in that area back there would impact our well?
I'm sure CORD could answer that, but again, that's not what we're here for tonight. It's simply to make a decision on rezoning the property. So instead of duplexes, it could be, you know, an eightplex.
Does this go to city council after this?
Is there a limit as to the height of those buildings?
No, but he's already said it would be typical of what's already there, two-story.
And if he changes mind, does he have to come back to you?
He doesn't have to come back to us.
Okay.
But yeah, he would go to the city. This will still go to city council.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just to rezone the property, and before he does anything there, all site plans will have to be brought back forward and approved, and for sewer, for access, for road access, it would all have to be approved during the council.
Yeah, my greatest concern, one of my greatest concerns is the road access that's there now. It's only been a street for, I don't know how many years, it's a number of years since the condos were there. Before that, it was the driveway for the house we live in. So, yeah, that, that could become a little precarious.
Again, all that would have...
At very least, I think the condos should have a stop sign so they don't come swinging out as we're coming up the road.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Would anyone else like to approach the ZBA? State your name for me.
Joseph Butler.
Pardon, pardon?
Joseph Butler.
Butler? Okay, Joseph, will you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so I know Peter. He's an honorable guy. I trust what he's saying, that what he wants to do. But if we change the zoning to R4, what could happen in the future greatly impacts my property values. I'm at 139 Highview Terrace. I sit above this lot. That is my view. Currently, I have a river view, and in the summertime, the trees cover the condos that are there. Now, if he builds two-story condos there, that probably would not impact my values. But if the eight acres is zoned R4, sometime in the future, someone could build a five-story building, and my property values go down by half. That's my biggest concern.
But to do, to build a five-story building, he would have to come before the city, and that, the city would have to approve that he could build a five-story building. He can't, he just can't build it. He, he can get approval for the two-story building?
I get it, yeah, but I mean, still.
I'm sure, but, yeah.
There's, there's a lot of concerns there. The other is that, you know, with more people that are back in that, that valley, the more potential there is for, you know, are these two-bedroom units?
Right, right.
Or do they have children? These kids going to be crawling up my hillside, across my creek? Am I going to be liable for insurance? Are there going to be fences? You know, I, there's a lot of questions that we have with this. And I know it starts here with, with the zoning, and it's not, that part's not you. Okay, I'm just letting you know that we have some serious concerns here.
Right, I understand that, but at this point, though, that could happen now. Cause even with duplexes, there could be children back there or whatever.
He could still build duplexes.
That's, that's true. That's true, but the condos are farther down in the valley, and it's less, much less likely. If they, if they put them where they're at, they're literally right at the bottom of our hill. I mean, and so, I mean, their playground, or, you know, their, their yard that they're playing in is going to be right at the bottom of our hill. Plus, we also have deer that come through there. We have coyotes going through there, you know. Every time we have, you know, EMS, we hear the coyotes. You know.
Yeah, I, I lost a dog to a coyote. I don't know what you're talking about. I, I think the point, though, that we're maybe missing with anybody's concerns is even if we don't rezone, he's got eight acres that he is freely able to build on.
And I understand that. I understand that.
Okay.
You know, I, I, I understand that he has that eight acres, but he doesn't have the ability to put apartment buildings there. And no one else in the future has at this point.
Like, I guess he could have a five-story duplex. But either way, the city would have to approve it, you know, I mean, he just can't go out and build whatever he wants without city approval and, you know, coming to the departments of the city, the various departments, like, you know, the fire department, and all of those have to look at the site plans and/or the development.
Okay. Did you guys have any questions?
Not a question, I can speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, approach the podium and state your name for me.
Put that down there. I'm Elizabeth Mountjoy.
Okay, spell your last name for Brad. Excellent. Will you raise your right hand for me?
Sure.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you, go ahead.
Hey, I'm at 135 Highview Terrace, so I already, my property is two and a half acres behind my house, and it kind of goes down in a triangle, so I'm already looking at the A condos that are there. So, my question is, why can't it just stay at R3? That's the only thing I have to say. I'm not sure why it needs to be R4. If we can already have like 32 more down there. It does seem like a lot. It's wet. We do have a lot of animal traffic, and I just prefer not to have a lot of noise down there because it's supposed to be a quiet creek. And I don't think it will be, so, that's all I have.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to approach the zoning board on this particular case? Okay, state your name for me.
Gregory Johns.
Gregory Johns, excellent. And Gregory, will you raise your right hand for me? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Go ahead.
I have a couple of concerns. I have been at 215 Quiet Creek a good part of my life. But I was there before the condos were ever built, uh, when Howard Iber had his playground down there in the valley. The area he's talking about was a pond, and it has silled it in and grown trees and stuff. I don't know that him building on that area is ecologically good. I don't, I, uh, have the same concerns my wife does, that any kind of construction down there is going to affect our aquifer and our well. I know that what he says is a gravel road down into that area, at one point was, uh, asphalt and two-lane, cause that was how it was when Howard Iber had the playground down at the bottom. Used to skateboard down it many years ago. And he can make it so it's travel, trafficable for people down there, but I don't think that that amount of traffic on Quiet Creek is, is safe, just like my wife said. And I think it impacts all the other people at the condos too, in terms of their safety, from people coming up the road. And that's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the ZBA on this particular case? Okay, seeing no one, we will begin deliberations. We will go back to case number SU-2025-002, and that's the petition of Doug Purdue uh, for vehicle repairs at 3210 East Washington, East Peoria. And I will go through the questions. Will the establishment, maintenance, and operation of the proposed special use permit be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare?
No.
Will the proposed special use permit be injurious to the use or enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for uses permitted in the district?
No.
Will the proposed special use permit diminish or impair property values within the surrounding neighborhood?
No.
No.
Will the establishment of the proposed special use permit impede the orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted in the subject zoning district?
No.
Or have adequate utilities, access roads, drainage, or other necessary facilities to be or been provided?
Yes.
Yes.
Or have adequate tr- measures to be or been taken to provide ingress and egress from the site, minimizing traffic congestion and hazards on public streets?
Yes.
Yes.
Will the proposed special use permit conform to all other applicable regulations of the zoning district?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Questions, comments, or emotion?
I just, before a motion's made, um, to throw in the landscaping, like you said, the landscaping around there, he has limited access to what he can actually do. And anything that he does do is going to be an improvement, so before we throw on 153 points or whatever it is that was suggested, I just think the board ought to keep in mind that, what he has to work with there, so.
I would agree.
So, in that case, I will make a motion to approve, uh, case number SU-2025-002. With the stipulation of everything that he's already provided, the landscaping that he's already talked about, the, uh, everything else that he had on his drawing there, as far as the parking and all of that stuff is under consideration, so that's my motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? So, you're basically saying that, oh, get in trouble. Basically saying that what his plan includes landscaping-wise is sufficient?
Uh, for me, yes.
Okay.
For me also.
And then Brad, do we need to include the oil separator thing, or that's just city code anyway, right?
Yeah, so that's already required by the, uh, uh, Water and Wastewater Superintendent.
Okay, any further discussion?
I'm curious if we may want to add to that, um, that vehicle parking, storage, or anything like that is only on pavement. Um, there's a lot of gravel out there already, and, um, storage of vehicles has to be on pavement. I just want to, curious if we may want to add that to the motion.
Temptation.
So, the motion has, the motion's been made, so we can either vote on it as is and vote it,
I guess so.
And vote it, uh, and then go back and readjust? How many, how many of you are considering the paved or, uh, hard surface?
Well, I think the hard surface is something that is required anyway, so I don't think we necessarily have to have that in the motion.
That's, well, I guess what I was thinking is that's just an ordinance.
Asking that for clarification, but it's, it's got to be that way anyway.
Right.
So, it, it shouldn't matter.
Okay, so vehicle storage should be on, okay, excellent. We clarified that. Then I'll go for a roll call vote.
Driscoll.
Yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Tippett.
Yes.
Broschiers.
Yes.
Sams.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Motion carries, and this will go to city council?
Yeah, so, city council meeting, uh, won't be tomorrow night, but it'll be the first, uh, first council meeting in, in May.
Tuesday night, six o'clock.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, suggested that you attend the first meeting, just in case you have questions.
Which Tuesday?
First and third Tuesdays of the month, and sometimes they have, like, an extra meeting in the month, but this month, I guess not, right?
First Tuesday in May, I think it's the sixth.
It's the sixth.
George. Yeah. It, it is recommended that you come, if you can. In case they have questions.
There you go.
Thanks.
Okay, we will move on then with case R-2025-003, and that's the petition of Pete Mangieri to rezone property located at, at the end of Quiet Creek Drive from R3 two-family dwelling to R4 multiple-family dwelling. Um, the questions, I, will the proposed rezoning conform with existing uses of property in the surrounding area?
Yes.
Yes.
Will the proposed rezoning conform with the existing zoning of the property in the surrounding area?
Yes.
Yes.
Is the property suitable to the uses permitted under the proposed zoning classification?
No.
Maybe.
Yes.
Maybe. Okay, does the lot or lots possess one of the following? 200 feet of frontage, 25,000 square feet of area, or join a lot with the same zoning classification?
Yes.
Condos are already zoned R4. Will the proposed rezoning be injurious to surrounding property or improvements?
Yes.
Yes.
Discussion?
Uh, first of all, I have no idea what's going to happen on this one, um, but again, just like the other one, if it doesn't pass, it doesn't go to city council, but if it passes tonight, it goes to city council. That's correct, right? So, even if it passes tonight, um, again, I recommend anybody and everybody show up at the city council, um, for the same type of thing. It'll be the city council, um, and, you know, again, we're just looking at it being rezoned. What happens then there is, is completely, um, separate from tonight. But again, this isn't the final. There is more, and there is, it, it's good for both parties, um, to, to show up to that. Without one party or the other, it's not going to, uh, the city council won't be able to make some decisions, and I've seen them not be able to make decisions because one party or the other didn't show up. With that.
Well, I think, yeah, my, my first thought is, something can be built there regardless of whether we rezone it or not. So, if you're looking down the hillside and you're looking at condos, and five years down the road, you're looking down the hillside and you see duplexes, I don't know that it's really going to be that different. It's something obstructing your view.
And I, I think the issue is not the rezoning, but is what is going to happen in the rezoning.
Right.
Um, and that is something I think city council, um, could potentially address more in terms of putting limitations on what is done here. Number of units, size of units, there are already some restrictions, obviously, with heights and that kind of thing, but that's one thing that could be done at a later date as well. This is not a, uh, license to do anything and everything, um, but the city council could limit that even, even further, and, um, you know, I, I, it's, this one's difficult, but again, all we're doing would be, uh, looking at the rezoning of it, and it doesn't seem to do much. You could still populate it with a bunch of buildings, um,
Right.
at this point.
And I'll, I'll say this, so, if it does get rezoned, and whether it's duplex or whatever, uh, there was a big concern about the flow of traffic and stuff. The city will address all that. They will not let him build thirtyplexes back there and have one little road coming in and out. Everything has to be.
Public works, public works, and, yeah, sewer, I mean, everybody has a say-so in a project like this. Um, go ahead.
And, and, and I get what you're saying about your road and stuff, but that can all be addressed at the same time.
Um, and that's why I brought up the shared, shared driveway, cause it appears to be, uh, a driveway, the Quiet Creek Drive or Way or whatever it's called, doesn't seem to go all the way to the apartments. That seems to be a driveway. The city doesn't allow shared driveways, so that was one question I had. I don't know how that works or if it is a street currently or, or what. Um, but that would be a hurdle that would be not a part of tonight, but a part of the continued, uh, discussions.
I think to clarify there, the, the city's right-of-way does end at the Circle Drive.
Yeah, so that is technically a shared driveway then beyond that.
Correct, yeah.
And I, and from what I know about the city, um, they don't allow those, so that might be something that needs to be addressed. I don't know if you've addressed it, uh, with the city or, or how that would, would happen. If they don't allow it, what you'd have to do is make it a street.
And I think in the past, we've had to approve shared driveways for property upon meadows.
I wouldn't be surprised.
When they built a second house next to a, cause the, the, um, I dot wouldn't, wouldn't let us put a second driveway off of meadows.
I just don't know if that is a zoning thing or if that's something else. Do you have any idea if shared driveways is a zoning?
I mean, we, we certainly see examples of them throughout the city already, um, whether they were in existence before zoning code or not, uh, usually. Sometimes, um, there are access easement agreements, things like that, that would allow for these kinds of things, but that would all be reviewed through the city code and with the city department. And a lot of times, we ask, like, for these kinds of situations, we ask to see the, the easements and, and make sure that everything's going to be kosher.
Eighteen years ago, um, somebody was looking to develop the property next to mine, and they, I had been talking, I believe, to Ty, and a shared driveway was not allowed. They would have to make it a road. So, maybe it just has to become a road, which may, um, help figure out what you were talking about with the drives and stuff is, or with, uh, with you coming in and out, and, I, I don't know. I don't know if the answer is there, but I wouldn't be surprised if it has to get developed like a road with curbs and, and all those kind of things, and that might assist. That might end up being a little stop sign, like you said, as well.
Anybody want to take a stab?
I'll just add something here really fast, um, so, uh, looking at this, at this solely just at the rezoning, I think it meets all requirements to be rezoned for what you want to do. But then thinking about building there, it's a different story. Once again, I just reiterate, I would do your diligence to really understand, uh, if you can build there, um, and get, get those permits before you go any further. But I, I hate to say it, but I, I would make the, the motion to approve the rezoning.
I'll second.
Thank you, Michael, and Troy? Roll call vote. That's fine.
Uh, Driscoll.
I'm going to say yes.
Whitman.
Yes.
Tippett.
Yes.
Broschiers. Sams.
Yes.
Brunner.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries, and it'll go to city council.
And that's as presented, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, do we have any old business? Do we have any new business? Okay, and lastly, uh, this is the time when a citizen can have the opportunity to address the zoning board of appeals on a non-agenda item. So, if you approach the podium, it can't be on either of the two cases we've heard tonight, just to reiterate. Seeing anyone, seeing no one, uh, move to adjourn the meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
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 May sixth.
May sixth, six PM right here, same place. Those guys back there.